Okay. I'll take your word for it. Uh, thank you all for joining us this evening. Make sure your cell phones are muted or turned off, and please stand and, and join me in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you for all, uh, all of you for showing up and, and being here with us this evening. Uh, I'd like to start the meeting off with roll call. Patty, please call the roll.
Wanda.
Ryan.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Don.
Here.
John.
Here. Agenda items, and I get a conflict of interest from all of the commissioners this evening.
I don't have any.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
Hey, the approval of the agenda.
Second.
Of a motion by Wanda, second by Dan, to approve the agenda for this evening. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now is the time for public comment. We are a little bit early, but we'll move forward with, uh, public comment at this time. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item upon which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against the members of this body, county staff, individual, or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. Are there any public comments to be made? You coming up, Bob?
Welcome. Yep. My name is Bob Gleick. I'm a Yankton County resident. I would like to speak on the motion that the county commission made last week, or last meeting, or I'm sorry, about advertising for a new ambulance director. First of all, I want to mention that I strongly support the ambulance service that we have. I have all respect for the job that gen- people are doing. But I think the county commission should rescind the motion to advertise for a new director and keep Mr. Cowman in control of the ambulance service for the next reason. Instead of advertising for a new director, which costs us money, time, and interviews, and other problems with the election process. I think we should advertise the ambulance service for sale to private entity to take over. If a year goes by and no one has picked that up, I think the county commission should vote to absolve the ambulance system and shut it down. According to the last meeting, we have given the request to local officials for help on the ambulance service and gotten the same answer we got when I first started coming to county commission meetings 23 years ago. They refused to help. The reason they can do that is the ambulance service buried will turn around and be used by the city hands-free, no extra cost to them. If they start figuring out the cost, I want to be to make their own ambulance service, get their own facilities. They might be more willing to come back and sit down at the table and have discussions on it. You know, like I said, I support the ambulance service. I know they've done a great job in the years, but like you said, the money's getting tight. If the last legislative session is any move, you're not going to get any money from the state. And it doesn't sound like anybody's going to get any money from the federal level. And that includes the grants and stuff that's helped the ambulance service get by the last few years. Because if people would come in and work with the county, this would not need to happen. But they won't unless somebody gives them a kick in the the move. If you don't lose nothing, you're not going to do anything. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Any, any further public comments? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Paul is here. Um, we're going to approve the county burn ban. Paul?
Good evening. Unfortunately, I'm here to request that we implement, uh, a no burn. Just put it on permanently. In the past month or so, we've been going on and off, on and off. And all the fire chiefs are all in agreement that it needs to go on permanently because of, you know, an example would have been last week, we had one that it was a day that they could burn according to the ordinance. They started burning, the wind came up, got away, Yankton fire, and, and Lesterville went out there, and they spent pretty much the afternoon trying to catch it. So, well, come close to a couple of structures, you know, tractor caught fire, but they got it out. It's just getting that time of year that we need. Unfortunately, I know people got CRP to burn. There's a lot of cedar trees that piles that need to be burned up, but we need some moisture before that happens. So, I have sent you a copy of what we passed in years back, other than uh, the date, uh, that we changed on it. And I'm just asking that we put on a restriction until we get some significant rain. And so right now, I do not have what significant means. An inch, two, three, four, I don't know, but we'll let the fire departments make that determination when they feel that's good. Questions?
So, this would be a permanent ban on burning open fires out in the county?
Correct.
And what about cities?
It does not affect municipalities. They have their own ordinances. Uh, so if you have a small fire ring, if you have a burn bur- you can't use your burn barrel unless you have a mesh over it. The ordinance is very specific. Ordinance 17, that was adopted many years ago, uh, lays out what goes on. But in the cities, uh, I mean, like in Yankton, they have some restrictions. In Lesterville, there's no burning and everything. They follow the counties. So, when the county does something, they follow it that way.
Okay.
Uh, so, and right now, we're just asking to put it on. Hopefully, we've got chance of thunderstorms Thursday night. Maybe that'd be a big rain, or maybe it'll be another nothing, but.
Usually, when we put this on, it rains.
Right. But I did that earlier.
So, so maybe we should have put it on last week, but.
Last week.
But so, one more question then is it's a permanent burn ban, and then you will make the announcement when, when we get the rain and say, hey, we can burn for now for two days, or you can burn today and, but today you can burn, but then the next day the ban kicks in. Irregardless, unless you, unless you say for two days you can burn.
This, this document now puts it in place and there, if it goes to low fire conditioner, uh, like look, the grassland index on the weather service may go low tomorrow. If it's not, it's going to be a red flag. But if it would go, it doesn't matter. It's still on. Uh, if we get significant amount of rain and the fire departments all say it's good to go, let's take it off. Then we'll go back to the old way. When it gets to very high or extreme, then it goes back on. We go back and forth on and off. But right now, it's going to be just on all the time after you guys are signing.
A burning barrel with a cup mesh cover is okay?
Yeah. Quarter inch, it's got to be quarter inch or smaller.
Okay.
Fire rings, you know, stuff like that. Questions? I appreciate, I was kind of late getting it on there. Patty made the effort to get it on for me, so I thank her for doing that. But, uh, after Friday, we had to get it on.
I think you're very wise in doing that.
Yeah.
It's very appropriate.
Yeah. And it's, like I said, we, we held out as long as we could, and it's just not getting any better, and it's, it's time. So, we'll hopefully be able to make some changes.
Kate? Any other questions for Paul? If not, any further discussion from the commission? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
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 Motion. Motion. Motion to impose the.
Motion to impose the resolution.
Second.
I'll make a motion to impose the burn ban.
Motion by Ryan, second by Wanda. Any further discussion at this point in time? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Paul.
Paul, will you send me that for input?
Yeah, I'll get it to you. I'll get it. Thank you.
Kate? At this time, I have a resolution for our citizen of the year. Citizens of the year. I'd like to read this at this time and, uh, be it resolved that the Yankton County Commission congratulates Roger and Merrily Huntley as the 2024 Yankton Citizens of the Year. Whereas the Yankton County Board of Commissioners appreciates the dedication and hard work of Roger, Marilyn, and others, others in Yankton County, and whereas the Yankton County Board of Commissioners commend Roger and Marilyn for their spirit and service, and identify their commitment to continuance and growth of the healthy county, which has earned them the honor of Yankton 2024 Citizens of the Year. And whereas Yankton County salutes Roger for his service with the United States Army from 1959 to 1961, when he was stationed in Germany, and when he was recalled in 1961 to 62 during the Cuban crisis. The county also commends Marilyn for supporting Roger's service for then temporarily recall relocating to Germany. And whereas the Roger and Marilyn claim Yankton as their hometown, Roger then completed a vocational education degree from Iowa State, and Marilyn graduated from Augustana College in Sioux Falls and Mount Marty College in Yankton. The Huntleys worked successful careers within the community while simultaneously raising their wonderful family in Yankton. They are proud of their offspring, who have become prosperous and productive representatives of strong values that Yankton County promotes. And whereas the Yankton County Board of Commissioners identify the strength of the future will depend on those committed to selfless service for others, as exemplified by Roger and Marilyn. And now therefore be resolved, whereas the Yankton County Commission declares April 27, 2025, as Roger and Marilyn Huntley Day in our great Yankton County. Congratulations. And there will be a ceremony on April 27th in their honor at the Elks Club in Yankton. Appreciate that, and look forward to being there also. Do we want to snap a quick shot of this or no, at this time?
You guys want to say anything?
Would you like to?
They're not.
Okay.
Oh, okay. 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 All right. So, we're good.
Thought you were the family.
I didn't do. That's, um.
I think it's.
Brian.
Register of deeds.
Brian, you're up.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. First quarter report. We had a good first quarter. Uh, January, February, and March were all better than their respective, uh, months in 2024. You saw the services we provide that you see listed in that overview. All of those saw increased numbers. We had, uh, more than a hundred increase in transactions, about a 50 increase in birth certificates, a 70 increase in death certificates, uh, 37 more deeds in this, uh, first quarter of 2025. And unfortunately, we saw an increase in liens. There at least has to be that, uh, lien update. We had, uh, some good financial numbers, though. Our total fees collected for the quarter were $73,040, and that's a $9,100 increase from 2024 for the first quarter, a 14% increase. And, uh, we saw an increase in real estate sold in the county for the first quarter. We saw $5 million more in sales in the first quarter of, uh, 2024. Uh, we've been talking a lot about finances, so I just did a quick check on my office budget. We're 25% through the year, and I have spent 23% of my budget, so basically about $5,000 below budget, and that's where you want to be at the end of the year, and I'm sure we will be. Uh, back to those liens, uh, Uh, back to those liens, uh, we had a, a big increase in January, and I think Patty, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's because of the election. Uh, Alyssa, who does a lot of the lien work, was so busy with the election that some of the liens got put off and then addressed in January. And so we saw five hundred and twenty-six liens in the first quarter, most, uh, two hundred and seventy of those were in January. Uh, and we saw two hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-six, uh, total cost on those liens, which is about a, a one hundred and seven thousand dollar increase from the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. There is some good news, uh, our lien collections were probably the best quarter that we've seen since I can, uh, remember. We had sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven in county liens collected in the first quarter. And, uh, to put that in perspective, last year for the entire year, we had eighty-one thousand in collections. And twenty twenty-three, we only had, uh, twenty-nine thousand in collections, so we're heading in the right direction.
Brian, is that, uh, due to, um, that company that we hired, or?
I believe that that is true, that.
That's great news. Yes?
Cause they just started.
Well.
Maybe they're scared.
Are you talking about the ambulance? It wasn't them, but we have seen some increase in collections on old ambulance liens, and I think that drove a lot of that, that sixty-three thousand. So, uh, overall, pretty good year so far, and, uh, April's been looking good so far, so hopefully I'll have a good second quarter report as well. Any questions?
So, the, the collection increase, the sixty-three thousand, you're, you're saying is possibly from our, our crew that's collecting, doing the collection at the ambulance service?
That, that was the driving factor in that big number.
Yep.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. Brian always gives very detailed and, uh, exact reports, and I greatly appreciate it. Uh, one of the things that I would mention, uh, is that, uh, on our task force that we're working on, uh, we requested, uh, some input from each of the department heads. And then we also, uh, requested, uh, if they have any ideas to increase profitability uh, for the county. And I think Brian is the only one that sent in any comments for increased profitability. Thank you very much for that.
Try to think of a few more, so hopefully we can get that first item passed, that'll be significant.
Yes.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the register of deeds first quarter report.
Second.
Got a motion by Dan, second by Wanda, to approve the first quarter register of deeds report. Any discussion? None, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same, nay? Motion carries. Sheriff, and we have Mr. Steven Luke is filling in for Preston Chrissy this evening.
Former sheriff.
Yeah, most of, yeah.
Welcome.
Good evening, I'm gonna try to go through this report to the best of my ability. If you have any questions or wanna see something specific, I'll pretend I know the answer, and I'll answer them. Uh, first thing I wanna say is, uh, when you started the higher click, that was a huge benefit for the jail. Um, we've had over a hundred and twenty applicants since we've started that, which is huge. The previous jail administrator, he had three, so that's made a huge difference in our, uh, hiring ability. Um, we've had really good retention for the first quarter. We haven't had anybody leave in several months, which is very good for corrections. Um, usually they're jumping ship to go to PD, law enforcement, whatever, so we're doing really well there. Um, a few other things is, we got the, the vans, um, the transport vans, we got those back. Um, they took one of them to, um, Preston's work vacation, is what his wife likes to call it, so just a little shot at him, I know he's watching. Uh, anyway, uh, come take a look at them, they're really well put together, um, really pleased with them. Cameras all over the place, we can really keep our transporter safe and know what the inmates are doing in the back, so it's really good. Um, one of the things you were talking about is profitability. One thing that me and Sheriff Chrissy have, uh, talked about, we talked with the marshals. Now, so we have two of those fifteen passenger vans, we're actually talking with the marshals of doing marshal runs, they'll pay us forty-six bucks an hour on top of the mileage per mile, so we can make some pretty good money off that, that's where we make a lot. So, we're talking about possibly, um, you know, hiring a transporter, going all the way down to Omaha, or wherever they may need us to go, we'll make some good profit off that as well. So, that's something that me and, uh, Sheriff Chrissy have talked about, so. Um, as for the numbers, uh, you can ask me why the numbers are increased for the sheriff's office, I have no idea, um, but they're higher, so we'll go to the, the jail one. On the, I guess it'd be your third page there, where we're showing the US marshal income. Um, local arrests have been down a little bit, um, so I've been getting more marshals coming in and in. We're averaging about thirty-five to forty marshals now for the last month and a half, and you can see that in the difference, where we're getting about thirty thousand more this month. Uh, last month, excuse me. Um, and then we've also implemented that one oh five daily rate for out-of-county holds, so it's across the board. You can see the increase there as well, that's got us another thirteen hundred dollars for the same amount of people we've had in there, so that helped out. Um, the only other thing I thought about bringing up is twenty-four seven coordinator, you can see through the several months that it went from Cheryl to Sharon. Um, Cheryl, Cheryl is now helping us out at the jail with transports and the parole room. And then Sharon has now completely taken over the twenty-four seven program, things are going really well there. Made a few changes and made some good documents, make it easier for the judge and Sharon to get acquainted with, so. That's all I know.
You made the comment that the local holds are down, which leaves us the possibility for more marshal holds.
Correct.
Um, is that seem like it's gonna possibly be a trend, that our locals are gonna be better behaved?
The problem is, is we can't determine if that's gonna continue, and we don't wanna overwhelm ourselves too much. Right now, we're averaging over a hundred people. Um, I think when I left there, it was a crazy day today, I think we're at like one oh three or something. Uh, and we just got a request from the marshals to add fifteen more, we'll probably take five to ten more. That's a comfortable, but, uh, as soon as you do that, all of a sudden the PD brings in eighteen more people and we're scrounging, but. So, we're, we're trying to get as many as we can, cause that's a good income revenue.
Sure.
As long as the locals go down, we'll certainly bring marshals, more marshals in, so. And we have been holding for ice as well, um, so that's the same price, but call them marshals.
Okay.
That's all I got, unless you have a question, anything?
Further questions?
Move approval of the sheriff first quarter report.
I have a motion by Dan, second by Ryan, to approve the first quarter sheriff's report. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Ambulance.
Good evening to all of you. I'm gonna start my report by going over the, uh, attachment that I put in your.
You have the most colorful report.
I, I used a lot of color on it, yeah, I did. Um, five hundred and forty-one patient care records, or five hundred and forty-one calls for the quarter. Um, I, I refer to it more as patient care records because the number of actual calls probably wouldn't quite match that, because we might go on one call that requires us to make several patient care records. For example, if we have a, a motor vehicle accident, that's one call, but we may have four or five patients, uh, that we, that we complete patient care records on. So, there were actually five hundred and forty-one patient care records during the first quarter. Four hundred and seventeen of those were handled by the first crew ambulance, a hundred and six by the second crew ambulance. And we had to call in a third crew ambulance for eighteen of those. There were no fourth out ambulance calls during the first quarter. Underneath that, you see we had three hundred and eighty-seven billable patient transports, seventy-one percent of those, five hundred and forty-one were billable patient transports. And a hundred and fifty-four of those calls were no transports, such as lift assists, refusals, or no EMS needed. One of the other things that I didn't put, uh, one of the categories was a treat no transport, and we'll talk about that in just a few minutes. Uh, you can see that we did fifty-five patient transfers outbound from a Vera Sacred Heart Hospital in the first quarter. Twenty of those were to a Vera McKinnon in Sioux Falls. We took sixteen patients from the hospital out to the airport to be put on, uh, medical plane to be flown out. Uh, fourteen patients went to the Avera Heart Hospital in Sioux Falls. Three patients were returned back to Sister James Nursing Home from the hospital. We took one patient to Sanford Medical Center in Sioux Falls, and one patient went to Sanford Children's in Sioux Falls as well, so. Fifty-five, and I believe that our decline rate for transfers was only about, uh, probably only four or five that we had to decline for various reasons, uh. It may have been an ALS request, we may not have had a paramedic available, it might have been that we had an ambulance that was already busy on another transfer. Uh, so, uh, very few declines during that first quarter. Um, on the next page, you can see that we have four hundred and fifty-one payment claims that were sent to Waystar, which is our, uh, clearinghouse where we send uh, where we send the invoices to, to make sure that everything is correct before they go out to the payer. Uh, and if you're wondering why we would have four hundred and fifty-one claims when there was only three hundred and eighty-seven billable calls, uh, several reasons for that. Some of those were probably still left over from December of twenty-fourth, that were being pushed into, uh, January as well. Um, I mentioned the lift assists and the note, the treat no transports. Even though we don't actually transport a patient for those calls, we do bill them for it. We bill seventy-five dollars for a, a lift assist and a treat no transport. An example, that would be a diabetic with low blood sugar, we may go on scene, we may give them a medication that brings their blood sugar back up, and then they end up, uh, uh, refusing transport to the hospital, but they still do get billed for that because we provided a service. Um, the other thing is that there may be multiple claims for one patient, um. Uh, you might have a Medicare patient that also has a supplemental insurance, so we have to send one claim for Medicare, another claim for their supplemental insurance. So, that's two claims for one patient, or in a motor vehicle accident, you might have uh, one claim going to the auto insurance and another claim going to their health insurance, so. Um, that's why the number of payment claims is higher than what you see for billable calls. Um, if you look right underneath that, you'll see that, um, uh, the number I want you to look at in, in kind of the greenish color there, whatever you wanna call it, is, uh, the perfect pass claims. Ninety-three point four percent of the claims that our billing ladies sent to the payers or to Waystar did not need any adjustment. They were filled out correctly, the way that they needed to be.
So, see that percentage again?
Ninety-three point four percent of those five hundred and forty, four hundred and fifty-one claims, I'm sorry, were filled out correctly and did not have to need any adjustment. Uh, the first number there with clearinghouse rejection is that just means that Waystar uh, found something that needed to be adjusted in three percent of those claims, and sent them back. Uh, the payers themselves, whether that was insurance or private pay, or whoever it was, uh, there was, uh, uh, something that needed to be adjusted in those before they sent it back out, so, um, essentially, our billing staff, uh, sent ninety-three point four percent of them out correctly before they got to the payers. Revenue versus expenses for the first quarter, our revenue was two hundred and sixty-one thousand and fifty-eight dollars, twenty-three cents. And our expenses for the first quarter were three hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and, and seventy-two cents. That three hundred and seventy-five thousand, over on the right side there, you see twenty-five point seven percent of our current budget, that's how much we've spent so far. Twenty-five percent into the year, so we're just about right on track with that. Uh, there's several reasons why I'm gonna tell you that we're gonna, we're gonna catch up to that, we're gonna, we're gonna be well below that when we get to the second quarter. Um, if you take the expenses, uh, and subtract the revenue, the difference was a hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-fourty-nine. And, uh, with the, uh, Census Bureau census last year, twenty-three thousand and five hundred and nine residents. The cost per resident for the ambulance service for the first quarter of twenty twenty-five was four dollars and eighty-six cents per resident, is what it cost. Currently, we have thirty-two employees on staff, you can see we have five full-time medics, five part-time medics, two part-time advanced EMTs, five full-time EMTs, ten part-time. Uh, we have one full-time operator, uh, one part-time EMR, and then our billing staff, two full-time billers, and one part-time biller that come in. Um, any questions on that before a couple of other notes that I have here?
Do we have a, one of our billing clerches retiring here in May?
Um, no, um, that actually was rescinded, uh, uh, about a month or so ago. Um, I think that, uh, the discussion that you guys had had previously was that Brenda was going to retire this summer, she has decided to stay on for a couple of more years, so we don't have to look into replacing her just yet. Uh, she's decided to, to stay there for a couple more years and, and, uh, and, uh, we anticipate that Maria will be there, uh, a few years past that as well, so. Um, we do not have anybody retiring, however. Uh, speaking of, of, uh, our billing staff, Maria Cameron attended a billing certification course in Las Vegas last month. And she did pass that course and received her certification, so both Brenda and Maria are now certified billers. Um, Alan Gary has resigned to the full-time paramedic. He was hired on as a full-time EMT back in January twenty-three. And he was attending paramedic school at that time. Uh, Alan married his wife in November last year, together they've kind of been looking to move out of the area. He finally found that opportunity here about a month ago and accepted a position in Kansas. And his last day was last week, April seventh, so we have one full-time paramedic that has left. Um, I am not going to ask you to backfill his position, because I think that we can keep it covered for the time being. It's going to be a cost-saving for us, uh, in the time, uh, in the time being. Uh, we can use some of our part-time staff to help fill in some of those shifts. And, uh, another reason for that is because one of our full-time EMTs is currently attending paramedic school, she will be graduating by the end of the summer, and so she'll be able to just kind of step up and take over that role without having to hire a, a new paramedic. Uh, we also had another part-time paramedic, uh, that has resigned, Jerry Weber, he also was a full-time medic for us for several years, we hired him back in two thousand and twelve. Uh, he was, uh, full-time for a while, went to part-time status when he got another full-time job, and, and now has, just doesn't have the time to do it anymore, so he's retired, uh, resigned as well. Uh, so with those, with those part-time positions, um, we are also, we have another full-time, uh, EMT who we know is going to be leaving us this summer in July, he is, he's been accepted, uh, in medical school at the university, and so he's gonna be resigning. Uh, so there will be another full-time EMT position open, I think also we'll wait until later down the road, later in the year before we fill that, uh, I think that we can still get that covered, and again, some cost savings there. The part-time positions that we're getting to open up, um, I would like to keep filling those part-time positions as they become available. It doesn't cost us anymore to hire another part-time, uh, uh, position. You know, right now, we have a pool of about twenty part-timers that are filling shifts, and if that starts to drop down, we have a lot of difficulty filling those part-time shifts on the weekends and, and some of the weeknights that we have those open shifts, so. Um, uh, we're getting some applications for part-time, and, uh, I would just like to be able to to continue to, to backfill those part-time positions as they come open, so that we don't get ourselves into a position where we're not able to fill some of those shifts. Um, the last thing is that, uh, I have, I have talked to John about, uh, I was sitting on the hiring committee as we start the search for a new ambulance administrator, just to help make sure that, uh, Yankton County EMS, you know, has some representation on that hiring committee. Um, and I actually had just talked to John before the meeting that, uh, the, uh, Yankton Fire Chief has also requested to assist us on that as well. I think he'd be an excellent candidate for that, because he is a paramedic, um, and he worked full-time down for Lincoln Fire, uh, before coming to us, and they ran the ambulance service down there, so he's got a lot of experience on that end as well.
He's gotta fill a couple shifts a week and he can be on the committee.
We tried to talk him into that, but no luck. Uh, that's all I have, you guys, what questions do you guys have for me?
I'm Mr. Chair, I, it's been a few years since we've looked at our lift assist and some of our rates. Uh, probably about almost five years, hasn't it?
I believe two thousand and eighteen was the last time we did rate increase.
I think it might be time to just take a look at some of those rates and see if they're still competitive, um. I know, I think lift, lift assistance, some of those, those ones that we do quite often, it might be, might be timed.
I agree.
Get your opinion on that, and then, uh, I was looking at the, the, uh, the, when we do the ambulance for the airport, I know at one point we were gonna review that, uh, as well, that's what, when an air crew comes and we pick them up and then go get the patient and then drive them back. You know, at one point, we had considered looking at that, too, if, and I know you're busy and have a lot going on, if, uh, you could review those, and if there are some rates that seem like they haven't kept up with the cost of everything else, I'd certainly appreciate you looking at that.
Yeah, the, and I agree, the rate, rate review is kind of high on the priority list for me right now. Uh, and there are some things, we do actually, when we do an airport transfer, that actually is two patient care reports, because excuse me. We do go to the airport, we pick up the flight crew, we give them a ride to the hospital, and they get charged for that, the flight crew gets charged for that. And then when we pick up the patient and transport all of them back to the airport, then the patient gets charged for that, so there's a charge both ways, but um, I do believe that that needs to be looked into, and, and I believe that our lift assists also need to get looked into, I think that we could be charging more for lift assists as well.
Okay.
Another thing, I, I guess I, I really appreciate that you being willing to step in and have, just heard good things about the ambulance recently, and so thank you for your willingness to do that.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
And, and another, another thing tied to the. And, and another, another thing tied to the, the, the. In, increasing the, the rates. If, if we can implement, you know, you come up with a, a, a number and we can implement them. I think the sooner the better that we do that. If we, if we're, if we're, we haven't done anything since two thousand and eighteen, we think, I think we need to do something. Earlier than later, so.
It's time. I'll start looking at some numbers, making some comparisons, then I can bring those back to you.
Perfect. And again, thanks, thanks Troy for all your, your help and and filling in for this position. So.
You're welcome. That's all I have.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Do we need to approve that?
Yep.
I would move to approve the first quarter twenty twenty five ambulance report.
Second.
Motion by Wanda, second by Don. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Gary.
Good evening. We have one plat tonight, track two of the Aggie's edition in the north half of the southeast quarter. Of section thirty five, township ninety four north, range fifty six west of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. Uh, we're basically just fulfilling our admin requirement. This is in the ETJ. So we're uh, since we're joint, uh, we have to approve the plat also.
Is there any minimum lot requirement on, in the ETJ or?
It just depends on their zoning.
Okay. Move approval.
Motion by Dan, second by Wanda to approve the slowy plat. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, vacate the R O W. Right away. Got anything on that, Gary?
Uh, basically, yeah, this is a request to vacate right away. Um, there's no street that runs through there. There's a transmission line and they're, they're just requesting to vacate that. And they've been working with Northwest Energy, I believe, to, to make sure there's no issue with that. And Mike's already signed off on it.
I'd move to approve. Go ahead.
Yeah, because then it'll be advertised and it'll be approved at the November.
Okay.
If you just have to approve the petition.
I'd move to approve the petition to.
Proved at the May six.
Second.
And a motion by Wanda, second by Dan to approve the petition for the, to vacate the right away. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Chicken ordinance.
Our next item on the agenda is our chicken ordinance. You're up, Wayne.
How y'all doing? My name is Wayne Hodge. Yep. So. I suppose I'm trying to see if we can have some chickens out there in the country. So that about all it boils down to. So a, a handful of chickens, not a lot. Say six to ten or something like in a coop. With uh, I'm sure y'all have got regulations we can follow. So, um. I'd hope. Yeah, do that.
And you want to have chickens so they can lay eggs or you just love chickens?
Lay eggs would be pro, would be a good thing. So. And if they don't lay eggs, they get their head chopped off.
You can fry them.
So true, so true.
Uh, this, Mr. Chair, uh.
Yes.
Met with uh, Mr. Wayne and and Gary Better, um, kind of got a plan. Gary, would you come up and kind of explain what we? Uh. What we talked about and and I think Gary has a, a plan in place to do that and.
Yes, we met with Mr. Hodge, um. You know, the, we, we started the conversation at last week's planning commission meeting and we have it on the agenda for next month. The May thirteenth meeting, but. I think they all realize maybe there's a little more to talk about than, than just assuming. One thing or another. Um, there's a lot of, lot of ways to go about this. I, I had, I had pretty much told them that I was. I was thinking that maybe it would be good to make it a conditional use. But um, that's the discussion that needs to be had. We've had some issues with nuisance complaints in some of the bigger subdivisions. So. Where Mr. Hodges, it's a little more rural, but, but um. You know, when you have the complaints were driven at, at uh, Crestview and down south on South Deer Boulevard and. And um, so a little different type of situation. And so we need to figure out, does it work for everybody? They, they're zoned the same. But a lot different requirements as far as size of lots and, and uh. And what people want in those areas. So.
Where Mr. Hodge lives, it's um, much bigger lots, correct?
Yeah, his lot isn't that much bigger, but, but yeah, some of the surrounding ones are. And yeah, you're looking at. Ten surrounding lots versus hundred plus in, in the other two in Riverside and Crestview. So. So that's it, that's where the, you know, it might be a little trickier.
And there's, and it could be neighborhood, neighborhood covenants as too that we're unaware about. So this would. This wouldn't alleviate that if, if, if there's a covenants and.
And then looking at the packet, it appears that Mr. Hodge has gone around and asked. Um, his many neighbors if they cared if he had chickens out there and they, quite a few of them, I shouldn't say they all. But at least it appears at least fifteen of them are okay with him having chickens.
Correct. And you know, just even like you mentioned, the, there's some concern or some more discussion probably needs to be had on. I kind of proposed it and enclosed just like the city does, but. You know, there's differences between always having them enclosed or people would call me, say they're running around the yard. And make it a nuisance complaint. And so there's just a variety of things we need to discuss and. Try and see what work, what, what might work for everybody.
Well, I think out there, there's quite a few wild turkeys that run around and I don't. Think chickens are more. Destructive than turkeys.
That's one of the things that Mr. Hodge mentioned in our meeting. And as we all know, that area too, there's, there's a lot of wildlife running around. Which is again, different than what it is and I, on the Deer Boulevard subdivision. So. Those are just some of the things we need to work through.
So this would be, you, your plan is it'd be changing zoning ordinances, uh.
Correct, yes. So we're looking for R two and R three initially, and that will all be discussed too, but. There was a comment made at the last meeting. That uh, well, they'd like to see it in R one, but R one already has hobby farms. And so they can already do it, but, but um, the R two and R three people are the ones that we get calls periodically. And I know myself, I have a neighbor right in town here that has them. They're not supposed to be running around, but every once in a while he lets them run around the front, front yard and things. And those are just things we need to discuss and see if anybody has issues with. At least with the conditional use. You can, the neighbors can, can state their opinion. If we make it permitted, then it's a little different and then, and the nuisance complaint becomes a little different also. So it'll be on next month's meeting for sure on the agenda either way. Thank you.
So at this point, no chickens.
We're, working on it. Thank you. Thanks, Wayne.
Uh, that whole, right?
Yep.
That's right. Next item, our bid for courtroom upgrade. Wanda, do you want to explain that?
Certainly. Um, we have four courtrooms over in the safety center. Um, courtroom A, which is the largest courtroom, has upgraded uh. Sound system, for lack of a better word. Courtroom B is the second largest. Courtroom C is the third largest. D uh, really isn't a courtroom, but we've tried cases in there. It has. One long table and we sit on either side and the judge sits on the end, but we prefer not to use that if we don't have to. At this juncture, courtroom C has the oldest. Uh, audio. Situation. Uh, it is not very conducive to trying cases. I've tried cases and all of them, I've tried cases in that one. Right now, the way courtroom C is set up with the old. System, if you will. If we have somebody, a, whether it be a party, whether it be a witness that's appearing by phone. Uh, everybody, judge's desk is in the front. Everybody has to come up to the judge's desk and stand next to the telephone so that we can. So that whoever's on the phone can hear and so that we can hear who's ever on the phone, which is. Uh, when you're dealing with a criminal trial is not probably the best to have the defendant right there next to the judge. Um, there has been a bid submitted. For upgrade to the system that's currently in there and that bid is twenty six thousand, twenty six dollars and seventy three cents. Once that, if it's approved, once it's installed, the unified judicial system, the U J S will. Pay back the county ten thousand dollars. So it will only cost the county sixteen thousand, twenty six dollars and seventy three cents. Um, I think that's, since we're going to have to do it anyway, it just seems logical to me to do it when somebody else will pay for. Half of it.
And, and Wanda, correct, you're, it's the county's responsibility for that, just so you're all aware. It doesn't make sense. It's. The courtroom, but we have that respond, another unfunded mandate uh, from the state. So that's.
It's the.
On us.
It's the county's responsibility. However, the unified judicial system had extra money. And they've budgeted for it, so they're going to pay back ten thousand. And in the packet, it has um, the list of all the equipment that will be provided. And up to use for the upgrade and they will do the installation. There will be some things that they exclude such as. Firewalls and moving ceiling tiles. But, and using the scaffolding, which uh, the ceiling in there is, I believe, lower than the ceiling in here. So that shouldn't be a huge problem. But I think it's something that the county should do at this time. Well, there's other monies out there.
The remaining sixteen thousand, how do, how should we budget, work that into our budget? Where is that?
I believe it'll come out of the building fund.
Okay.
It, it, I don't think this is something we really have a choice over if uh.
We have a choice. Thousand or twenty six thousand.
Yeah, exactly. If we wait six months, then that money might not be there and we have to eat the whole bill. So I.
It looks like, I'm, I'm just going through the whole parts list. It looks like the lar, most of it is largely uh, uh, putting in a new. New mixer and, and then having teleconference, you're gonna have teleconferencing abilities brought into it. And. It, it, it looks reasonable for quote from what I'm looking at, so.
I think there's absolutely no doubt that we have to do it, but I think we should ask, ask some of the attorneys that use that courtroom to possibly divvy up a couple thousand dollars each. To assist in payment.
So. One of the things we talked about uh, last year was uh, the. The challenge of, of uh, having up, dealing with translators and stuff. So this is going to help.
Oh, this will help immensely because right now, if you use the courtroom C, you, everybody cuddles up around judge's bench to hear. Because the translator who is on the phone, teletalk, um. Interpretalk rather, um, they have to hear what the defendant is saying, then they have to repeat into English, whatever the defendant says, and we're all cuddled up around the. Uh. Around judge's bench, which uh, now that the sheriff makes them wear belly chains, waist chains is maybe a little safer.
So Wanda, uh. Will this uh, improve the speed? In which the legal system responds to?
Not, not as a, not as a whole, but it will, it will reduce the amount of time that people are saying, what did he say? What did she say?
Would, would it be more likely that the judge would use the, the remote system and that could cut down on prison transports as well or?
Um, it's unlikely that normally judge does not use. Courtroom C as often for felony court. Felony court is typically in courtroom A, occasionally in courtroom B, courtroom C, um. You, if you're going to do a hearing in there. It doesn't typically have like five or ten defendants in there. It'll have maybe one. But will it speed it up? Not fast enough for you?
No.
I, I, you know.
I bet there won't be any change at all in the speed.
Oh, no, it'll be a little bit better because we won't all be cuddled around, but.
So that takes a few seconds. I'm talking about things that. Takes six months or eight months to. Getting rid of the judge.
Well. In Yankton County and in South Dakota, we don't have the delays that they have in bigger states. Normally we can get a criminal defendant in arraigned. And to trial within a hundred and eighty days, which is the requirement.
So will this, but will this update? Accept or, or have the more hearings in courtroom C, which will speed up the process?
Well, we'll have more. Hearings in courtroom C, but in order to have, speed up the process, we'd have to have more judges. And when you have more judges, then you have to have more people in the state's attorney's office. I mean, we only have three really usable courtrooms. The fourth courtroom frankly is not very conducive to anything.
I'm gonna uh, vote in favor of this.
Well, that's amazing.
But it'd be really nice. To see the legal system look at their expenses too, as far as running this county.
Well. I think everybody is cognizant of the fact that court appointed attorneys cost a lot of money. However. Court appointed attorneys, I believe the going rate now is a hundred and fifteen dollars per hour, which is reasonable. And. Unfortunately, there are a lot of people that. When they fill out their court appointed attorney uh, but uh, application. Don't have a lot of money and then they get a court appointed attorney. And some attorneys move things through the system a little faster than other attorneys. And that may make a difference in the amount that is paid. If we could. Think of a way to make it less expensive for the county, we would do that.
Good.
Um, you know, really quick also. Uh. entirely, you might know this too, is the courtroom C, is that, is that the same courtroom that has issues with wifi and? And connect, internet connectivity?
Uh, it doesn't have. It, well, it has ITV, but you roll it out on a little cart.
Yes, so right now. The county has wifi in courtrooms A and B because of the lack of. Technology available in courtroom C, we did not put any internet in there because of that purpose. U J S, because of their security protocols, they have their own wifi, not wifi, but wired internet. But as it pertains to the county, when we installed wifi in the courtrooms, we didn't put it in C because of the lack of technology.
Okay. I, I was just kind of going through these um, and they're installing a VoIP system and so that's going to need network connectivity. And so.
I guess would that go out of?
Is that on us?
Yeah.
Or is that on their system?
U J S.
Yeah.
I guess that's something they gotta answer. I mean.
Because that, that could, that could incur extra cost above and beyond what this quote is.
Yeah, I don't know. There's not county wifi in there, but there's state wifi, not wifi, internet.
And then the only other concern I have is just as the end user operators, it's they're. They're gonna install the system, get it all working. Who's, where are they going to hand it off to? Who's gonna be?
So as it sits right now in courtroom for technology, the clerk's office is trained to turn on. And record and handle all.
Operate.
Yeah, so, yep. I've kind of learned how to turn it on, but.
Okay.
It's usually realized on the clerk's office.
I was just curious, yeah, yeah, like what employees are going to then have knowledge of this.
I think the U J S employees are trained to operate it.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, so obviously we're gonna end up paying for this thing or putting it in. So can I get a motion to move forward?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the request.
So I could have a motion by Dan, second by Don. To move forward with the.
So I could have a motion by Dan, second by Don, to move forward with the, uh, courtroom upgrade. Courtroom C upgrade. Any further discussion?
Uh, for further discussion, appreciate, you know, Wanda looking at the grant. Um, again, I think South Dakota's the only state where, you know, so much of this criminal justice is directly on the counties and it's unfortunate, but we're gonna have to pay for it sooner or later, and at least a part of the cost is covered by the state.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Don, you're up, financial and budget task force.
Well, we had our first meeting and, uh, we talked about the expectations of reporting. Uh, the reports were to be in by last Friday. Uh, we got almost all of them and one or two, uh, left to get. Uh, but, uh, plan to sit down, uh, and go through them, uh, with the task force in the next week or so and look at their suggestions and look at their comments on twenty twenty-four's expense and revenues. So moving forward on it.
Awesome.
On the, on the issue on, on, uh, uh, things that may, uh, change the profitability, uh, of the county, uh, we have requested, uh, salary schedules from eight different counties, uh, salary administration programs. I think we've got, what's five, about eight, five or six? Uh, which, as far as I'm concerned, is, is enough. We'll look at that. Almost all of them use a matrix. I think there, maybe there's only one of the six that doesn't use a matrix. Uh, so.
Okay. Wonderful. And, and we'll have this information all put together by the time it's time for twenty twenty-six budget, so. Um, planning, so. Thanks, Don and Dan for putting that stuff together. At this time, I would approve or like to have a motion to approve April first and April eighth, twenty twenty-five minutes.
I would move to approve the April first, twenty twenty-five minutes, second.
Got a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to approve April first minutes. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. How about April eighth?
I'd move to approve April eighth minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Don to approve the April eighth minutes. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Claims.
I would move to approve the claims.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to approve claims. Any further discussion on the claims?
You know what, um, juvenile detention, thirty-seven thousand plus dollars, just so public understands. Big bill.
That's, that's setting the juveniles that have been prosecuted in Yankton County to Sioux Falls.
Thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and eight dollars of your taxpayer money.
So understanding was it, uh, who, in the last month or so, there was one time when we might have had, how many in? Two walls, eight?
Wasn't one family, but we did have eight, eight juveniles in the detention center in Minnehaha County at one time. I believe it was for seven days.
At five hundred dollars a day, soon to be a thousand dollars a day. It's a lot of money.
And three of them did get to come back after the seventh day, but there was still the five of them were there for several more days, so.
Uh, one more question I got on the air, airport funding of five thousand. I thought we did twenty-five hundred dollars for that at budget meeting. Was it five thousand? Cause I thought we reduced it last year, but I don't have
We did reduce it last year.
So I, I think either we should not pay that or wait, cause I, I, I thought it got reduced and the bill is for five thousand.
Double check the budget number on that.
I'll check.
I've already said, did you remember? Was it twenty-five hundred or three thousand?
I do not remember off.
But we, I know we talked about it and
But I do remember we did reduce it.
Should we not pay that one and then we can look for next? So
But before the meeting's over, I will look, so we can go back to the claims.
Okay. Well, I, I'm fine with paying everything but that one, um, cause it seems like it
And I'll check when you guys are in executive.
Okay. Okay. We admit, uh, omit that one?
Can we do the claims?
Can you keep, can you just
Can we just keep it open?
Yeah, keep it open. Yeah.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
Okay. March twenty twenty-five auditor treasure report pool cash.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion by Dan, second by Wanda to approve the March twenty-five auditor treasure report. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And pooled cash. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'd, I'd like to go back a, again to the bid on the courtroom. Uh, who, who are we using? Who is the bid from?
It's AVI.
Are they, I mean, we
They are the people that apparently
It's for this place here and it was supposed to be a great place and that then we're
These, as I understand from talking to the circuit administrator, are the same people that put the audio and visual in courtroom A and courtroom B. So those courtrooms actually work. This one, not so much.
And I know for state contracts, especially in the courtroom with confidential information, security systems, you gotta be vetted probably. So I think these guys are approved to work on state issued, state electronic systems.
There are apparently only a certain number of, of vendors that the state approves.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Back to where we were talking about, I think we were going to vote, or did we vote?
I will check on it.
Okay, then I would move
That's the claims, that's the claims.
I would, no, that was claims. We're talking about the auditor and treasurer's report and pool cash.
We just already, we just very fast that one.
Then I would move to approve the twenty twenty-five first quarter MI mental illness report.
Okay, you got a motion by Wanda, second by
Second.
Ryan? Any further discussion on that? MI mental illness first quarter report? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Now's the time for our final public comment. Does anyone, uh, wish to speak in public comment? Louis? You look like you've had a hard day today. Be easy on us.
I've had better days, but anyway, I would like to personally thank the two commissioners that I know of that when the lawsuit and the subsequent filing on Sentera hogs over the contract hogs in the county, two commissioners contacted pork producers and found out the facts. And I appreciated the fact that rather than go to the coffee shop or their Ouija board or where some of the other stories came from, they talked to pork producers that were in the middle of it and understood it, rather than spreading false rumors. Uh, it's one of those things where I heard, oh, you know, it's gonna be the end of the page. Well, they emptied out my hog building and refilled it right after they filed bankruptcy or for receivership. And the feed was delivered. I've heard that the pigs aren't getting fed and they're being taken away and all sorts of things. And if and when, there is another thing, there is no such thing as a secret in Yankton County. Somebody knows and somebody's willing to share. And I, once again, I appreciate the fact of the commissioners that called and found out the truth. And on a, just a complete side note, the other day I added up, I have a nursery. And since we got pigs in that in two thousand eighteen, we have run a hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred head of hogs through that building. And I don't think people realize just how valuable they are to the community. Because all those pigs eat, they're taken care of, there's equipment that has to be fixed and people are making good money from the side businesses off of it. And it's just one of those things where with simple closing, I think that's gonna hit the Yankton County a lot harder than a lot of people realize. Because people move away to go to the jobs. People leave schools, school loses funding. And a whole bunch of other things. But anyway, thank you again.
Thanks, Louis.
Thanks, Louis.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Need a motion to
I'd move to go into executive session.
Commissioner updates, got anything?
No.
I am.
I'm gonna be just really quick. Um, been a very busy month for me, but, uh, we do have, uh, some uh, response from our RFP, so I've been working hard on putting together some communication with them and, and, uh, trying to get as many, uh, proposals back, so.
Okay. Dan?
Uh, yeah, uh, spring workshop last weekend, uh, heard a lot of good positive comments. There were a lot of, uh, new county commissioners there, um, and, uh, a lot of people came up to me and said they heard, uh, good things in Yankton County and that's something we should all be proud of. Um, a, a lot of counties come and look to us for what we're doing and, and wanna emulate that, so that's something we should all be proud of. Uh, little bit on the governor's homeowner tax proposal. Um, as everybody knows, it's, um, gonna be going through the summer study and it look, would look to be a half cent sales tax for counties, um, to relieve, uh, homeowner property tax. And it would not be a tax increase that it says here because it would directly reduce property tax. So there would be no more, uh, funds collected, uh, by the, or spent by the county. It would just be an offset, so. That's all I have.
Okay, Don?
Uh, I attended the same meeting and, and found it, uh, very valuable, uh, almost every session. Uh, got, got to discuss ideas with, uh, others who were, that's our county commissioners and, uh, uh, got some good ideas out of it. Um, another issue, uh, on, uh, the ready board, which is the governor's, uh, office of economic development. A couple of things that I wanted to, uh, point out. Uh, one of the things is, uh, uh, the labor market. South Dakota's unemployment rate is one point nine percent, same as last month. We still have the lowest unemployment rate of any state and are hovering around historic lows. On the job side of things, total covered employment in South Dakota surpassed four hundred and eighty-three thousand in February with sixty-six hundred jobs added in the past year. These new jobs represent one point four percent year-over-year growth, which ranks sixth highest of all states over that period of time. There were several other things in here, but, uh, those were kinda the, uh, impressive to me. So that's all.
Okay.
Motion to go into executive session for contractual matter and personnel issue pursuant to SC, SDCL one twenty-five dash two, subparagraph one.
Got a motion by Dan, second by Ryan to move into executive session. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
I'd move to go back into regular session following executive session and we do need Patty out here for our claims matter.
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, I got a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to move back into regular session.
All in favor?
All in favor, aye.
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 Oppose, nay.
Claims.
Yep, we're here for claims. We gotta do claims first.
Uh, they did, um, the city, uh, proposed a 24,000 and then I have written by 20,000.
For the airport? No, that's not, that's not true.
That, yeah, that was 2,000.
Yeah.
What is down there is 5,000.
Yeah, so, so with the correction of 2,000 instead of 5,000.
A reduction of 3,000.
We just said 3,000.
Okay, so, we're gonna make a motion to approve claims minus the
With the correction on the airport.
As suggested.
Or a reduction of 3,000 for the airport.
Yep.
I second that whoever made that motion.
I guess why would
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, why would
I got a motion by Ryan, second by Wanda to approve claims with the
Reduction
Reduction of, for the airport donation.
I don't, assessment sounds better than donation.
Assessment, okay. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Okay, I, I, uh, move that we terminate an employee for misconduct.
Second.
I have a motion by Ryan, second by Don to terminate an employee for misconduct. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
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 Oppose, nay. Motion carried.
I would move to place an, an employee on administrative leave, pending investigation.
Second.
I have a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to place an employee on administrative leave pending an investigation. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion to adjourn by Dan, second by Wanda. All in favor, aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same, nay. Motion carries.
Uh, for issues for the next meeting, it'll be
The outcome of the